This call to order. Role call to determine the court.
Ms. Tacken, here. Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Record shows we have three present, Mr. James Green and Mr. Derry Green are absent.
I'm staying. Councilman Bradford, you would lead us in vacation, which I'll leave the place.
Hello, by the way, please, hope it's so far, Lord, we thank you for this week tonight. I'll be asking you to beat us, open our hearts and minds, that we take our community in the right direction. But we can thank you for all you have done. Lord, most of all, we thank you for what you're gonna do, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, that of the United States of America, and to the republic which is its land, one nation, under God, in his name, and in the name of the justice of law.
At the record, it's like that, Mr. James Green just entered.
I wanna make a motion to be introduced to the meeting. I'll make a motion to be introduced to the meeting.
I'll make a motion that Councilman James Green be introduced to our meeting.
Is that required Attorney Jones?
So, yes, we're going to bother to order that whenever an individual either leaves or appears after or to be recognized, more likely recognized as that sort of option to be recognized as having been present to those official records, they go present after the meeting.
Okay, so I think what we've done is sufficient.
Oh, you go on, well, just a vote up, yeah, so I'm gonna be, you know, just make a motion, just do a vote.
Vote, what's your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, record reflects that you, you know, looking, looking right at you. All right. Public comments, as they relate to items on the agenda. Louisiana Open Meeting Laws provide that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless the extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers from board members, mayor, department heads, or city employees. Are there any public comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Locke.
Before we get started about the budget, I don't know where it came in. We need a clear understanding on how a budget is made from year to year.
Yes, sir.
I think it would help us in general if we know how, come up, how the budget, how it's made.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, and we'll, we'll talk about that as we get into, further into, um. Any other announcements? Okay, at this time, I will recess this meeting to the sales tax district number one. We have two agendas. So, the sales tax meeting is now called to order. Role call to determine the court for the record.
Ms. Tacken?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Record shows we have four present, Mr. Derry Green is absent.
Okay. Louisiana Open Meeting Laws provides that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions or demand answers of board members, president, or the city employees. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to... Minutes, Ms. Holmes. How did you totally get the minutes, Ms. Holmes? Microphone was, can you hear me? I could hear myself when I was going in and out. Now, now, like, you heard it on Jefferson. My voice kinda caved, I said, I don't ever hear one of you talking at you. Everybody look in here, you been introduced to this stuff. Well... Uh, Teresa to bring the, the minutes. They were corrected, uh, that was, uh, there was some errors in it. The errors and, uh, dates. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. At this... There are two, well, that's why they have two different ones. I know, correct, and one. Special. So, we have two, yes, some meetings. Okay, so let's look at some of them. Okay, give you a few minutes to peruse those minutes. We have two sets, because one was tabled. Have you had any for time? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the December... What's the date on it? Fourth of December. Four December fourteen, yeah. December fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, and the minutes of the July thirty-one. Twenty twenty-three, wait a minute, July comes before December. When did that start then? Okay. I will entertain a motion on the December fourteen, twenty twenty-three minutes. Did y'all want to take them separately? The, the, they were tabled.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. So, now, on the minutes for July, wait a minute. Wait, you, you did, um, July, so this will bring us to December fourteen, twenty twenty-three. But we'll see. One was tabled, it had to be tabled in July, because July comes before December.
I think we got to make something, I think they turn around backwards, I think, you know. I forgot, um, kind of turned back over there, because if I, if I remember right.
Okay. But we're approving your tabled meeting in, in July twenty twenty-three. Those minutes were tabled, the next meeting was held in December twenty twenty-three. Okay.
Uh, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, I could. Uh, I'll make a motion, these are snapshots, and they're really in detail and really short. If I'm looking at twenty-three, December twenty-three, I'm looking at July twenty-three. I think that if I recall, but then I can make a motion that the full minutes in the record be presented to the council for, for clarity, because it seemed to be very confusing here. One of them had a motion, but a full set of minutes, other snapshot, this is a snapshot. And, uh, I don't wanna vote on a snapshot, because I can remember back to December twenty-three. Given that it'll be exactly what we're saying.
Okay, is there any particular thing, Councilman Bradford, that you want to go on record as saying on...
Yes, on motion, uh, twenty twenty-three, we're doing something with a revised budget. I think that we had a difficult on the budget, and here we have nothing to prove it. In the short term, we come back before, but we tabled it because I think of the budget was, uh, did not meet the requirement, so we had questions about the budget, or that was never answered. Now, here they come back today in short form, no detail. It, it, it just hasn't enough to approve the minute, and, and, and not telling us what we discussed, why did we table the minute, and, and, I mean, this is a snapshot. I don't vote on snapshot minutes. Well, well, look at, what did you refer to? Remember the whole topic of the budget?
So, which one, which date do you refer?
The twenty-three, the one, the, the one that it did with the revised budget, we never did get that.
What date, what date did you refer?
I think that, uh, December twenty-three, when she went back, but the council, went back.
December fourteenth, you come up?
Uh, December, yeah, December four, no, this is still a few.
These minutes, this part there are just for the sales.
Yeah, okay, the sales taxes, no.
That's it, this is sales tax district meeting, that was a bond meeting.
And, and, and they had a, they had a month wrong. Okay, okay, now, what, okay, which one were, which one there would you revise, delete the, the revive, uh, budget?
That was the, that was the, that was the meeting to discuss the budget, we haven't had those minutes.
No, no, not the revive, we had a revive, we went back to December, something that happened in December of last year. We were trying to get a, trying to get a minute approved. So, that's why I, I don't like snapshot minutes, because it didn't tell you in detail of what we're really doing here. Because now you're, now you're flashing something on the computer, I don't want to approve anything that we already had questions about, and we tabled, and had definitely done dealing with the budget.
So, the, the meeting, so we had two meetings come on June sixth of this year. There was, just like today, there was a discussion of the budget, that was, that was a special item. In there, there was a recess to the sales tax meeting to approve the agenda. They approved the minutes from the December meeting, which, and in that meeting, the thing came out that it was tabled, because, uh, there was issues dealing with the actual minutes had some errors, and then the errors needed to be corrected. And so, it was tabled at that time, and that's the June sixth meeting that you have, is that the action taken that was tabled. The minutes now before you again are the December meeting, where we went into that meeting and just voted to do the bond stuff, that's whenever the bond attorney was here at that time, for that sales tax meeting only. These minutes deal only with the sales tax district, which, y'all are the sales tax board, because it, it's concurrent with the membership of the council, which was adopted a while back. This isn't dealing with the actual budget meeting, this is dealing with just the sales tax meeting, which is a separate meeting.
This is not the adoption of the regular meeting, this is the adoption of the budget.
This is just about some sales tax.
It's not the whole regular meeting, this is just the sales tax.
That's correct. So, right now, currently, your title is, uh, is Sales Tax Board Member, uh, Bradford. Because you are a sales tax board member by your title as a council.
I had, I had a motion on the floor.
Okay, at this time, we did have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm on track, I love it.
All right. That's the December one, isn't it?
That's the June sixth.
Okay, but the minutes are reflection of the, um, December fourteenth meeting. Were table or corrections on motion made by Mr. Bradford, second of his time. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, should be properly moved and seconded, any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you. All right. So, now, that that business has been taken care, and in your packet, you will see on the very last page, where it says Sales Tax twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, Street Sales Tax twenty-three, twenty-four, revised at the very last page of, of your thick budget.
Okay, number five?
Sir?
Which one do you prefer, number five, we got two agendas here.
I know.
I don't know what one you coming from.
Okay.
It has been cleared.
Now that we have cleared up. My agenda's here. We recessed from our regular meeting to go to the sales tax meeting, okay? Yes, sir, okay, you have approved the minutes as of today. Okay, now, the public hearing. Public hearing, that's on the item number five. Public hearing operating budget for the basket of sales tax district number one for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. That's the, the very last page of your big budget that you have.
The very last page, I got two questions, what are you doing here?
Okay, until Mr. Jones come back, Mr. Locke, I know you have a question. Uh, the way the format is, is based on a legislative audit, that there's a side by side. You'll see account number, you'll see original budget twenty twenty-three on your heading. And incidentally, at your request, we did have headings, we had to go back in Excel to have the headings put up there. Then you have the May sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the year to date, um, expenditures, May twenty-four, you see those headings? You see it, okay. And then estimated remaining, then the revised, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four. You have a percentage change, the, um, proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then you have the percentage change column. Mr. Jones come back, he can, or, but this is the way the legislative auditor wants it prepared.
But it's...
Yes, sir.
You reject the budget, it's based on the revenue that you received in the previous years, right?
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying, so, when we go into it, you'll understand that this twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, fifth, uh, budget is just a proposed.
That's correct.
It's pop, it's just what depends on the revenue that we getting, got in December and January. So, it's based on things that happened in the past.
That's correct.
Also, in the future, what we expect to use money on in, in the future, with the revenue.
That's correct.
But structure comes to state, like the revenue for our companies from the city.
Right, that's correct, you're absolutely correct. And it could go up, it could go down, because of grants.
That's why, that's why it says proposed budget.
That's correct.
Nothing is ranked, proposed, you know, it depends on the revenue.
Exactly. Okay, any discussion, um, being with Ms. Tacken? Question, I have someone making notes, you can make your statement. Yes, we're still on sales tax. Councilman Bradford?
Sales tax, I have no question on sales tax, I do have a question concerning the budget.
Yes, sir, okay. Mr. James Green? Okay, Mr. Locke? And that this is a public hearing, anybody in the audience? All right. With that, I will... What way, you, I'll try to jump a few minutes before I adjourn the sales tax meeting. Okay, this is a public hearing, yes, ma'am, if you would like to come and make a statement, state your name, address.
Cindy Hendricks, one zero zero, Fosclero, I'll put nineteen oh five, East Madison, representing D and H inside the city. Can you hear me? I can't hear y'all, I can't, I can't hear y'all, I don't think some of the microphones are...
I'm listening, can you, can you hear me, Cindy Hendricks?
Okay, can y'all hear me? Is this one snoring? Is there a switch?
Okay, Lou.
All right, Cindy Hendricks, nineteen oh five, East Madison, Fascat, Louisiana. Um, I know y'all are talking about the sales tax, can you tell us what the revenue is in the sales tax? That we have, because we don't, the papers we have, we don't have anything. And also, we're looking at two different agendas, and we wanna know which one you're on.
We, if you will look on the last page of that thick stack that you have, the very last page.
I'm on there.
Okay, if you look at those headings, it will give you the information. Okay, well, this is the opportunity to make this, make the statement, and we're gonna, we're waiting for Attorney Jones to come back in. Okay, this on the last page.
I'm on the last page.
Sales tax, and you'll see all the headings. You'll see the original budget.
Okay, I see, okay, so this whole page is sales tax?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Okay, now, on the agenda, you have two agendas, which one are we following?
We're following the sales tax.
Sales tax.
One of them is sales tax.
Number five.
Number five.
The notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the sales tax district number one meeting, that's the heading, that's the agenda that we're on.
Okay, we just, we just couldn't follow you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine, thank you. Okay, okay. We're ready to adjourn this the sales tax meeting. Right, all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed? Okay, let us resume the the hearing on.
They have to determine a quorum.
Yeah, looking at the heading at the top of this. Special meeting of the mayor and board of all persons, this is our budget hearing, okay. Alright, let's, uh, roll call to determine a quorum.
Ms. Tacken?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Loh?
Here.
Record shows we have four present, Mr. Derry, ready to ask?
Okay, no one left the room. Okay, at this time, we are on item number eight, the public hearing general budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Have no taker out in the audience along with Ms. Holmes, so if you wanted to wait a few minutes until Attorney Jones come back, if you want to go ahead and state, uh, what you have to say and the notes will be made. Ms. Tacken, what's your pleasure?
My first question is, what will it take to open our police department again?
Okay, okay. Ms. Middleton, make a, make a note that, that Ms. Tacken would like to know what it takes to open the police department again. Okay?
Second question, on, on page two, first item. Are we gonna get answers in the next regular meeting, or?
We'll, yes, we can, we'll provide you, this is actually for discussion and give you an opportunity to state your position or your thoughts.
Okay, that's the reason why, okay, yeah, the reason why I'm asking is, cause we, we supposed to be approving the budget tonight, and I, not tonight, this week. Okay, alright, well, my next question is page two, item, the first item on that page, it says court salaries for police jury. Thirty thousand dollars that we budgeted, what is that for?
Okay. Okay.
Cause we didn't use any revenue last year for it.
Okay. Let's, let's put Ms. Tacken's name, that those are questions that she has.
It's the first on page two.
First item on page two. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars last year and now pro, in the proposed budget, but we didn't use any of it.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that has enough. It's showing that we put that thirty thousand, thirty, two hundred and thirty-six in revenue there, it doesn't show that we had any revenue for it.
I can hear you, turn it off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Put it on real quick.
I guess they click it off when I'm on here. It's showing thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars in revenue. I'm gonna turn it. There you go. So it's showing thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars of revenue there, but it's showing that we didn't receive any of that revenue. It is, I don't know if there's any expense that we, we expended on behalf of that, but this item's not showing any revenue that was supposed to be coming in.
What is it for, I see court salaries for police jury, I mean, what exactly is it for?
Don't know, don't know, I'm just clarifying.
Should have shared, um, election expense or something like that, we possibly, um, but we'll, we'll get that answer for you, Ms. Tacken.
Alright.
Did you have any other?
Yeah, the last item on page two.
Last item on number two.
International Paper Company, um, what is, what is that item, what does it have to do with?
Okay, we'll get that answer for you as well.
Also miscellaneous income, that's on page three, the, um, sixty thousand dollars, I just want to know where's the income coming from.
Okay, which item?
It's on page three, it's, this is one, two, three, four from the bottom.
Okay, miscellaneous income?
Yeah.
Okay, get that information.
Okay, I'm kinda jumping now, but page, page twenty-nine, for the police department salaries.
Yes, ma'am.
I need a breakdown of the shifts, which shift is the chair department?
Twenty-nine? This is, this is for you to state, your, what you. So page twenty-nine.
This one, the breakdown of the, um, police shifts.
Okay. Okay.
Um, back, going back to page seven, it says ten thousand dollars expense on projected budget for a financial advisor.
Okay.
Who is there? I see we didn't, I don't think we used any last year, but we budgeted for it this year.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
What, what one did I, did I?
That's on page seven, it's one, two.
Okay, I got it.
Typically, and we, we, we want to get your, what your questions are tonight, so we can, okay, go ahead, you have some more question?
Yes, ma'am, civil service expense, I see it was, um, back down, the proposed budget is ten thousand dollars. It was twenty-six thousand, but I see this year the proposed budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five is only ten thousand dollars. Why do we go down that amount?
Okay. Alright.
I know last minute we talked about, um, repairing that traffic light on Maribor, and I see on page eight, we have, let's see, one, two.
Yeah.
Number eleven. I see that we have, we budgeted last year three hundred and ten thousand dollars for it. The protect, projected budget for this year is two ninety-five, so is that gonna include repairing the light on Maribor that we requested?
Okay.
Page is it, what, page eight?
Oh, page eight.
And couple them?
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
Eleven, on eight?
On page eight.
What's your traffic light?
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Two hundred, nine five thousand?
Yeah, okay, well, that, I can, now, let me say this, so, we have not had time to, to get the information together. It's gonna take, uh, some time to, um, get the research, well, the research has been done because of traffic studies, so I feel comfortable in saying that this does not includes that. Okay.
Number, page nine, I see we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for office expense. And we used, it says seventeen thousand dollars, what do we, what do we buy?
Okay.
Are you asking for the receipt?
Yeah, we are going to provide that, the information that's requested, this is your opportunity, this is just, I have someone taking notes. Do you have the page numbers, Ms. Middleton, and, um?
Um, on page nine, I'm concerned about environmental court. I see, um, the original budget was thirteen thousand dollars and we budgeted thirteen thousand dollars again.
Okay.
We used eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
So my question is, are we having environmental court? And if we are not, we, we need to start having code enforcement. To my knowledge, I don't think it's writing any citations, then that's a big deal. And we need environmental court started up, if we paying somebody, just actually have people coming to court.
Okay. Page number nine, environmental court. Okay, anything else, Ms. Tacken?
Yes, ma'am, the computer system expense, that is one, two, three down from the environmental court.
Okay.
I see we, the budget last year was sixty thousand dollars, we used forty-eight thousand of it. But the proposed budget for this year is fifty-five, so if we got new computers last year, are we getting new computers in this year?
I, I have, I've seen purchase requisition, but I completely made a note of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, let me see, okay. Page fourteen, last item, departmental charges, I would like to know what those, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars, looks like we spent thirteen thousand.
I'm sorry, thirteen?
Page fourteen, last item.
That purchase.
I did have a question about telephone expenses, but that is throughout the budget. I, I, I guess in each department, I'm seeing a lot of phone bills, so are we paying cellphone bills for department heads, or? What was included in all these telephone expenses?
Okay.
Alright.
Telephone expenses, Ms. Middleton?
Okay, and on page twenty-eight, and I guess that will, this will require more discussion. Because I know for Louisiana Delta College, I don't think we charging them anything, if I remember right, um, very minimal fees. So in my, in my opinion, I think they should have to take care of their own maintenance of the building, and we letting them use the building, we shouldn't have the expense to take care of the building.
Okay. Um, I'll initiate it and then I'll approve to Attorney, and then we offer a little clarity, Ms. Tacken.
That's all there.
Um, they invested about a million dollars into improving this, and the building is still under the ownership of the city, so Attorney Jones, you want, let me get something that Ms. Tacken can.
I didn't catch the name of the building.
Um, the technology, uh, building.
Okay, is it not?
What page is that on, Ms. Tacken?
And it's on page twenty-eight.
And what I can do is pull the contract to see what it says for our lease, Ms. Morris, ma'am.
And then if, I mean, if we are responsible, I think we probably need to, uh, amend that. Okay, on page twenty-eight, I see a hotel motel expense. I, I don't understand what, what it's for, what it's about, just like some clarity.
Okay.
Okay, and on page thirty, second to last item, we are budgeting for our computers again. This time, it's, um, fifty-three thousand dollars. It's saying that we used, year to date, May twenty twenty-four, we used sixty-two thousand dollars, so I'm just trying to see where all these computers are going.
Alright, what page is that?
That is page thirty, second to last item.
Okay.
Let's see, and, okay, this is page thirty-one, the Viola contract, I guess I'm just not understanding how, how that works.
Thirty-one?
Page thirty-one.
Okay.
Cause I see we budgeted, we budgeted a lot of money for this.
They have a surplus?
That pretty much runs, they, they operate our sewer system, which is very expensive.
I know, but I'm saying that they have a surplus.
Okay, let's look at, what's compared here, what we at the revision of budget.
If they got a surplus, maybe we can go down on our sewer fee, sewer rates. I'm just saying.
Well, that's, that's controlled, um.
Well, let's do a study, let's, let's do a three-year study, look back and see if they've been at the surplus there yet. Of this taxpayer's money.
Alright. Alright, anything else, Ms. Tacken?
One more, page three.
Page what?
Page three. It's like the third item, and that's just, it says LA DOTB street maintenance, so I see we budgeted, original budget was thirty-two thousand dollars, that was in twenty-three, twenty-four. And this year we proposing thirteen-four, so
Okay.
What is that, what is that about?
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Ms. Tacken, alright, we will move to Councilor Bradford, um, Ms. Middleton, if you'll change pages. Councilor Bradford?
Yes, I have similar question to Ms. Tacken on page number twenty-eight, about these, uh, shifts. One hundred, two hundred, and again, I might ask a question, I like councils, I mean, I know we did some, so what should be announced, though. But why, why do we need five shifts and what, I don't, I just want to come back, when, when you do bring answer back, I want a complete answer on the, Ms. Tacken covered ninety-five percent of things we talked about earlier, but I do have some other concerns about the twenty-four and twenty-five budget, that's not included in here.
Okay, what page are you, um, talking about?
Something that I, I feel should be added to the twenty-five and twenty-four budget that's not in here, that, that, that would make the city operate according to this city, but one main thing, I would see the marshal. The marshal, uh, under the new law, if they required the marshal to be, but, into the city budget and it's not mentioned in this budget at all. I just want to do, have you, I think we talked about that similar to the last meeting, and, uh, could you give some clarity, I mean, if you want, uh, the marshal really got to be a part of this budget according to law, the past about two weeks ago.
Correct, correct.
Attorney Jones?
Correct, and that's where I stepped out too, was to be, Ms. Stafford, I've had discussions along with her CPA that does her audit, Rick Duplessis.
You have?
Miss, the marshal, I've had, that's where I stepped out to for a second, was to, with me to finalize what we need for Mr. Duplessis. And so, it's my hope that beginning this week, or the first of next week, we'd have what it is. Now, I did preliminary look at what her audits were for the last few years, what her operating expenses were. It appears that operationally, she was expending from her stuff, the things that we would, you know, theoretically have to cover. Somewhere's around fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a year was, was operational budget over there.
Did that include vehicles for that office anywhere?
I, I am underneath the impression that this, they, does not include vehicles because they. I, I am underneath an impression that this, they, does not include vehicles because they, they don't have a vehicle they were using personally.
Well, I guess when we come back next week, we may, I would like to have a full detail budget, what it consists of, I, I think, uh, knowing that that office, our city should. Our marshal office should appear like a marshal office with decals and, and vehicles. And cause they can assist us, that could be another, other that cons- consists the regular police with our residences and show up on scene, you know. The marshal got to be other way, they got to look like marshals, not in their own private vehicles that we're going budgeting, we should. Make sure they budget according to law, their vehicles should be a part of it. I mean, you can look into a decision discussing, that was some of my concerns.
And, and I've had discussions with Ms. Chafford and with the CPA regarding specifically, and, and this is probably outside of, to explain law. Her revenues are less than seventy-five thousand, so she submits an audit that looks much different than our audit. She has what is called an affidavit audit. Which Mr. Duplessis puts together for her, but it's very abbreviated what the items are. It just simply has very broad strokes. It says, here is, uh, operational cost, here is this cost, here's that, here's revenue. It's about four or five items on there. As opposed to what you're looking at here, which is a much more detailed budget, which is required in the budget act for a municipality that has over five hundred thousand dollars receipts a year. So it's in helping her understand how these lineups would need to be presented to the council. So that one, the termination has to be the necessary expenses. So that would A determine the necessary expenses. And B, also helping to have a little group look like what the city is. And so there is some, some quick trigger in this, that this is something that's newly came about, that comes in in August, that needs to be placed into the budget. That by law, we have to place into the budget, just putting it in a form so that it can be recognized. And so that as the legal advisor, I can review it and say, hey, this, this meets the standard for necessary, so I can advise the council. Cause you can only prove things that are necessary, to say, yes, this does meet necessary in that degree. So they're working together as a team to try and accomplish that goal, to, to make sure that that law is followed. And that, that office is, is funded as the law requires.
Oh, as the law requires, okay. Okay, my, my, it's, it's, we spoke about summer work program for the youth. This is twenty-four, twenty-five budget we, we're speaking of, uh, this summer, it's on page, I think that the city should put in a. Budget for summer youth program because that's part of prevention and crime and we, with teenage over birth. And have, obviously do, and I think as a city, we are, should be obligated to see that as done. And we come up with some type of amount to, uh, fund our city, our, our summer program for the kids, inner-city kids, the, the inner-city kids. Uh, the ones that being targeted and most likely, you know, get caught up in things like a funding. And as a city government, I feel that we should be able to provide, uh, some type of productive summer youth program for the kids in basketball. And I like, cause you had to put it into the budget. And one other, have you, let me know when you go, when you ready for the next one, council. You ready for the next one?
Let me ask yourself, council.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
What was the duplication question that you had that was similar to Ms. Tapp and said, um?
I assume that Ms. Tapp.
Had a duplication.
Oh, my, we, we're both basically on the same page here about the police, you, you talk differently, police and things, you know.
A duty.
Shields, different, shields and different things like that.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Bradford.
Okay, and we, we go from the work program, for the youth work program that we should fund it. And one other thing, we often talk about parking regulation, we get grants and everything. Our parking regulation, we should have in our budget, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, for Dawson Park swimming pool to be open. I mean, it's a shame for kids have nothing to do, no job, no recreation, a, a pool shouldn't be that much expense. I think we, and we, we, uh, we talked about it, but we do understand about it, but the twenty-five, twenty-four, on this budget, I want, I would like to see. Something in that budget financially wise, you know, for the, for the youth, I mean, for Dawson Park, excuse me. I mean, we, we, we just pushing it by, and we have other organizations in this community, like the boys' club, I think the Pelican club. Uh, we need to be coordinated with them financially, cause, cause money to run and we, 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 we put organizations to work. Especially like boys' clubs, that, that, that prevent crime. I hope you understand what I'm saying. That prevent crime. Kids, young folks have things they can do, they can, some of, boys' club teaching a lot of tutoring program. Uh, the Pelican club been around for twenty-two years, the mode they've been working in and out with the kids. They need fun, we need to set summer aside for them as well, just like we do Main Street, uh. The beautiful education that come before, I think last year we gave Main Street, I'm not quite sure what you're saying, it doesn't work, it, it need its purpose. They, they help keep things clean, they, they does a wonderful job. But we got to reach out for, we got to, to move the city forward, we got to reach out and be willing to help other people who have been going in a nonprofit area that can benefit us. Once we get those organizations funded, they, they contribute to, to give, you know, some money, show that their, their efforts is appreciated. Then we can reach kids, parents and everything. We got other work, we all got to work together to make it better. And I think that we, by not contributing some type of funding to those, uh, organizations, we, we, we being ourselves, we being ourselves, we going our backwards. And one other thing too, it's just, we're just discussing, uh, I like to see, why can't we do a senior elder, elder home and repair? To help to beautify our city. When you take, uh, we can give grants, I mean, give grants for home improvement. We could use those same kids in the summer to do same work, to paint senior citizen homes, you know, let, let, let's clean up. And, 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 then we can, then we, then we can move up. I, I think these are the things we have to initiate, someone have to initiate these things when we are the city government. And I, and I, in the city, we have, senior citizens who can afford, got, you know, I had a lady call me today, and then I'm gonna move on there. I had a lady call me today, she, on a fixing car, she got a gas pipe broken in her home. All for her to get her home fixed, these types of things would need to help out with, all for her to get her home fixed. I would get her gas pipeline fixed, she had to come up with a hundred fifty dollars and, and yet have to hire a license problem. That could run, run into the money. And, and we, we just like to, uh, help, you know. We can't help everybody, don't get me wrong, but at least set something back for emergency. We got to pay our part as well. We, we handle the city government dollars. And I, I said one other thing, but I, 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 I like to see, what are our code enforcement salary and, and things like? What, 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 what are we paying the code enforcement? What are we paying, uh? A coordinator, record coordinator, uh? Are our treasurer being paid? What are they being paid? The treasurer being paid? What is our clerk? I was just kind of going to the question, what is our clerk being paid? What is our tax collector being paid? None of this is mentioned in here, that I see, you know, spelled out. And I think we really should, we really take our time and really look at some things that would make this city move forward. And, and consider some of these things, I'm saying, you know, I think we could go forward, if, hand in hand, if we could put some of these organizations together into the budget, you know. But we got some high, high, high salary people, but I, I'm not gonna criticize nobody, I know what you make, that's not, I'm not concerned about what you make. I do, I am concerned about, we, we spread, we spread, we spreading it out where everybody can benefit from the taxpayers in this community. Every organization, they're not one or two, but we want to definitely, definitely, uh, be able to move forward with this. The miscellaneous expense, uh, that, that's quite a good miscellaneous expense we spoke about earlier, and I think that could be used somewhere. You know, unless the lane is special, you can, when you can have thirty thousand dollar sit aside, police officers underpaid. We really need to do some brainstorm in our community. I know we can do it, we just got to sit down together as a unit, a community and do it. Because leaving some things unsolved would create problems and, and, and like I say, streets and crimes, it all goes down. Let's just consider that in the budget for twenty twenty-four, in any area, like I say, and one of, uh, I'm saying one other thing, I, 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 I just. I don't want to take up too much time, I, I think I shared my time, but so, it bothers me when, when we cannot get together and move our community forward. Like the others around the communities and education. In the city, we have to take a lead role, but for the simple reason. Our children, eighty-nine, eighty percent of them, or eighty-five, ninety-five of them, deal with inside the city limit, and we are responsible for them. And I think that we need to put some money, you know, and take money doing it now, to put some money aside into some programs that will help move our community forward. Basically what I, then what, like I say, I can't get any answers, uh, I wish I could go to the board, but like I say. I, I get record coordinator, I, I looked at a job, I'm very disturbed about, it's a record coordinator. Um, we just had the record coordinator, we, we just started a record coordinator position in the last month. And the record coordinator come in at fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. Now, the record coordinator get fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, I'm not calling in, I'm talking about the position. Okay, uh, fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, and that, that's something we created. And that in the chart about a record coordinator, you're going to look at that budget, and then, and then. Our current position is open, and, and that's not in this budget. Uh, what are we, uh, we gotta be, I think we just need to slow down, let's interior one have open mind. Just have some round table, more round tables. I like this discussion, because they perform, thank you very much for having this nice round table. Cause you can almost see what you want to get off your mind. And I don't like to say, uh, those type of thing, let's consider. Bringing our police, I think Ms. Tapp spoke about that, we all have concern, all the citizens have concern. Let's really think about putting our police officers at full duty. We are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for patrolling to another agency. We're not collecting, see, we, other word, we got to spend money, but we got to have a way of making money, we got to generate revenue. Why are we spending a hundred thousand dollars, we get no citations, money from their, from their, from that agency, no court calls. Every, and ninety percent of people there stopping within the city limit. You know, that, the courts, and everybody giving something except the city government, master. Imagine, but, but, when you look at the patrol, we need to, that revenue needs to come here, into this, into this general fund. Court offices are track tickets, and we put our police department back together, then we can generate revenue. Revenue, that's a big thing in law enforcement, uh, being citations and, I think Sturgerton, one way, I build their city on citation. I do a one-sixty-five, they're stopping everything going one, one mile over, they build their city like that. That's, that's very important. We're talking about revenues and budget, don't move on, but there's something came to go through my head. I'll keep, keep your answer, I'm gonna leave it alone, I believe it alone there, but I really like to see this community go forward. I like to see, and I'm gonna say this, I'm, I'm really going to do this, think about this, this, this discussion is good. Uh, it's, it's in the general, we pay a hundred and some thousand dollars to, uh, housing over to the SHAC department. Time a hundred and some thousand dollars, time thirty years, we could build a facility. We could do capital rent like everybody else, build our own jail, they pay them thirty-one dollars a day for every inmate. How many, how many dollars, if you keep them, the, the judge sitting for thirty days, how much money they costing us? And we don't charge them but a hundred dollar fine, and then we turn around, have to pay for a thirty-day housing, the housing for thirty days, nine hundred and some dollars. And we only, the judge fine you one hundred dollars, and you send them to jail for thirty days, who has to pay for that? We do, other word, we going our backwards. These are things we need to, you know, just consider how to generate revenue.
Ma'am, I have one more question, and I promise I won't.
Okay, I'll do it.
One more question. On page ten, the six item, the sixth item from the bottom, miscellaneous expense.
Page ten.
Page ten. That miscellaneous expense in twenty-three, twenty-four, looks like we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars, but we have used year to date ninety-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
So I'd like to know what, what that expense, what, what was it for?
Okay, um, thank you. We're gonna move on, um, Councilman Bradford, if you, if you will call me. There, there are some things that you and I can visit, um, just have a conversation and, and, and give some historical information.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Jay Grant.
Yeah, ask most of the questions where they need to be asked, but I want to come back, yeah, I'm, I'm way down the line. I was going to just talk about park, I don't want to be redundant over and over, just your ask, cause I'm gonna call you on some of these.
Okay.
These things.
That's fine.
But when we come to park recreation, I look at programs we got funded, you know, like basketball, we on page four. And track programs, let's just look at, let's look at, reallocate some of those funds to make, you know, if. Let's do it where it's appropriate with the amount of people, let's do, let, let, let's, let's think smart when we allocate those funds. And Mr. Bradford spoke about the swimming pool earlier. No matter which pool you ask me, whichever ones cost the least to get going, I think we need to kind of brainstorm everybody. I know you got a task, we need to come up with some kind of strategic plan to at least get one of our pools open. I know, you know, we, we don't want to go spend a million dollars, and we got a lot of other things, but I'm sure. As the distress, as the city is, high crime rate, you know, we got to reach our youth. And I think that we can come up with a way, reach out to the legislators for what we have to, grant writers or whatever. But I'm sure, I'm almost positive that we, we work together, we can strategize, and we can come up, we can come up with a solution. With getting one of our swimming pools fixed. And also, I look at, I'm still on page four.
Okay.
It's a police investigation fees. I mean, I see zero, zero, zero. What, what, what do that constitute?
Can we get that information for you?
Okay. And. And I just want to make a statement.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So, I'm not gonna be repetitive, but it's vital that we come up with a comprehensive solution to our police department. Because we just can't keep kicking a can down the road, waiting on a Hail Mary to come, you know, somebody throw us a long pass. We have to come together and see what's in the best interest of the city or pasture. I know it's complicated, but that's why we was elected, you know, we, we got to, we got to try to figure out a way in which our police department could become operational twenty-four hours a day. I mean, I, I know it's, I know we. I mean, I, I know it's, I know we talk about manpower, we talk about resources, but no resources can replace a human life. And I think that, you know, being on this council and being in the community, I think we need to let the public see that we are taking action, not just on committees. That we really are trying diligently to get our police department up and running. And it's, I'm not, you know, the problem we get bogged down with, placing blame, I don't wanna place blame on no one, let's just start from zero, start from scratch. Let's commit to working together to solve the problems within our community, and that is a big obstacle. Because when you look at statistic going back to two thousand fifteen, you look at the unsolved murder rates, you look at the criminal elements in our community. It's devastating to our youth, and, you know, high crime area and high crime rate, nobody wants to come to Bastrop. As a CEO, take a chance on bringing their kids, because most of the time when you look at middle level management, when jobs come, they under forty-five. And they under forty-five, they probably have kids in school, and they don't wanna come somewhere. You come from a place, you come to Bastrop, you already see it's got a high crime area, and some come, and you come to be a manager at one of these facilities we have, and something happened to your kid. That'll be devastating. What I'm saying is, we got to make ourselves viable, we got to make people want to come to Bastrop, we gotta sell ourselves, because we're in a global economy. We competing with everybody, not just our next door neighbors, we competing with the whole world, and we have to do everything in our power to sell ourselves as a good city. And that's coming with fight the blight, it comes with solving crimes, it comes with something we ain't got too much to do with, that's our educational deal, that's, that's a critical component of a city's survival also. But we can control only what we can control, and that is trying to work together, we know funding is scarce, but I think, I guess this is a pep talk, because I want all of us to just start from zero, start from scratch. And let's work together, because together we can build Bastrop and make it better, because you know, a house divided can't stand. And we was all elected by the people, for the people, not for our own personal gain, our own personal good, but for the people in our district and the people of this city. So, I wanna make a commitment today from District C, that I wanna do everything in my power to ensure that Bastrop will not be the laughing stock of this state. We wanna get our police, police department up and going, and you probably see me keep harping on that, because that is, that is a vital, 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 critical component to attracting jobs. And, I lost my train of thought, I had something else, but I get passionate about the city, because any child lost to violent crime, it's, 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 they, they never reach. They never reach their full potential when they cut down by gun violence or whatever, and we got to do whatever we can to reach those, those young people. And just by shutting down, it's a psychological thing, when you think about it, you got a police department, a city of our size, that's non-operational twenty-four hours a day, it's just twelve hour shifts. I think this, I know we got Sheriff Department coming in and providing help, but it's just psychological, you got five councilmen in America. We been at this three years, and we have failed to solve or resolve a problem. So I just ask us to do it all we can, look for grants, and whatever we have to do to get the police department up and going, and that's, and I'll call you the rest of the time. That's, that's what I got to tell you stuff about, we would ask you, I would just, I would do it, we'd work it out.
Okay, all right, uh, Ms. Middleton, I think, uh, so thus far, and we're waiting to hear from Mr. Locke. The police department is what I'm hearing, that, that all three of you are interested in, so make sure you have those agreeing to that, and when we answer that question, we can answer it on, on the spot.
Hey, um, fine, next meeting, can the chief give us a report of how many full-time offices we operating with?
Provide that.
Are there anybody since we did those raises, all, all that information?
Okay. Well, include, uh, Ms. Middleton, include that in there to see, um.
Yes, sir, well, you know, I, um, I at last, at last being asked for, I asked you what you actually, department needs to provide us a comprehensive breakdown as to what was actually, I see it's in the budget, but you know. There's a bunch of numbers front there, but I think each department individually could provide the financial committee with a comprehensive breakdown of actually what was spent. And what was turned back in to the general fund, the reason I'm asking the question, would you, I see, I see one chief, I see both of the chiefs out here. And Jake, I thought it was him. Okay, it's three of them, there's someone, I can't see, but, okay, there he is. What I'm saying is, it's not a gotcha moment, it's to see actually what's spent, what's not spent, and so we can, we can help, we could try to. Try to help, help them achieve their goals, whatever goals they have. If we can actually see, because when you just give us these numbers, then anybody, hey, look at it, and then these percentages. If we can get some actual numbers, you know, this percentage, hey, you gonna be, we sit around trying to figure out fifty-five percent or whatever, we actually get actual numbers. Because what I'm, what I'm getting at is, a lot of this went back to the general fund, I don't think, none of the partner went over their budget. I don't think Public Works, I don't think the police department, and I don't think the, the fire department. So, what I'm getting at, this is the end of the year, we're gonna reallocate money, reappropriate money to each department. Them police crews, they probably ain't gonna catch nobody on high speed chase. What I'm getting at, instead of turning all that money back, you don't wanna go broke, but if you allocated the money, I think that what Councilman Green was, was alluding to last, at the last meeting. If you allocate that money, that means you already had the money on hand, you gonna, right, uh, go back to the revenues, you probably, we anticipate the same amount of revenues as we had last year. So if we had the money to appropriate it last year, instead of turning, I don't know what they, what the police department put back in the general fund. But what I was saying, instead of putting four, five hundred thousand, a hundred thousand back into the general fund, you're at the end of the year. Why won't you use that to purchase what you need, because we're gonna reallocate money again, because in any budget that you working with, they always say, if you don't use it, you'll lose it. So if we allocate five hundred thousand to any, just any other municipality, any other job you go on, everybody comes in and they give you, okay, you got five, five million. You don't use but four million, three million, they're not gonna give you five million, they're gonna drop it down to four million. So what I'm getting at, it's, that's not in this instance, what I'm saying is, whatever they turn in this year. Could they at least get at least one police car and do some work on some of them? I'm not, I'm not getting data operation, I'm just giving a suggestion, because this, at the end of the year, and the money was turned back in to the general fund, and we finna do a budget again. So if the money was already there, why would you turn it in, I know this been, this, this is no fault of the police chief, no fault of the mayor, press practice, they've been doing this from mayor to mayor, from chief to chief. I'm just saying, if the money is there at the end of the year, I was always told, if you want some, that's when you strategically wait, you don't spend all the money that you allotted at the beginning of the year. It's usually at the end of the year that people get what they need, because they know they gonna get some more money starting July first. So, so at the end of the year, then we finna do another budget, now, we, we talked about opening the police department back up, and we don't got capable vehicles. Budget, turn the money back in to the general fund. I don't know if that's, if that's the, uh, salary part, portion of it, or that's the operational portion of it, that's why I wanted a breakdown, so I can see, I won't just be talking off my head. I need to see if it was the salary part of it, it was allocated for salary, if it was operational part of it, don't turn that part back in, you can use that, but if it was salary, then that means you didn't have the appropriate personnel. If that makes sense, that's the only reason I wanted it to be presented to the finance committee, it ain't gotta be in the open floor, just when we have our finance committee. So we're gonna ask each department, let us look at the breakdown, so we can help each other, so we can all work with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Green, uh, Ms. Middleton, make a note that, um, Councilman Green has an interest in how to acquire police cars, and we can visit on that as well. We will move down to Mr. Howard Locke.
Fair enough, I've been listening to the public councilings and seeing like, the things that I have highlighted. We have been thinking of excellent job of explaining exactly what we need for the city and how we can fix it. I'm more concerned by, I, I look at Public Works, page four, ten, thirteen, and fourteen, and where it says education, when they're paying for me.
Twenty and fourteen.
Ten, thirteen, and fourteen, and it says training, uh, education, and there's no, no money in those accounts for our people in Public Works. And get trained to work on the equipment that we have. Put onto the bond, you see a whole lot of equipment that's there, but nobody know how to work on it. We need training for at least some of our employees to work on the equipment that we have, and you can sit on, have it on equipment down there, it can't be in. So, I, I'd say the company.
Page ten, thirteen, and fourteen, nothing.
Yes, sir.
Is in the budget for training, buy equipment, it's not listed there, nobody know how to work, it's crazy. That, that's it, I think they done a good job.
Okay, another, another thing I want to address, when we talk about public recreation, it's the, uh, abandoned houses. I'm talking about higher ass, and I'm just talking about abandoned houses. Man said, when, when you see a population drop, think thirteen thousand, something, you down to nine thousand, the, the people leave, but the property stays. And most of the time, when the property is there, and it's tied up, and the family squabble or whatever, and there's no clear owner, it falls into dilapidation. Now, I just would like the city of Bastrop, including councilmen, we all got, we all play a part of this, to seek out some type of grant, because you know, it's real costly. To go in and just try to, you know, condemn, you know, every home you see, but I think it's grants out there. Especially when you, uh, economically depressed region, I think we, we can first show us that a lot of things if we apply. Because I think the, the best solution to it would be, if we can find grants to go out and try to alleviate some of this blighted property. Or just, you know, I'm not just, I don't wanna point fingers, that's why I say grant, or we can research another way to go about combating these dilapidated houses in our community. Dilapidated house brings the property value down, it helps, but we got a homeless problem here also, you know, and a lot, a lot of those homeless people, that's where they, that's, that's their home. That's where they live at, you know, blighted property, you know, it's a bad, but it's, to them, it's a good. But, so, so, I guess we address that issue later on, see what we can do, but just as far as the blight, see if we can come up with some, I know you work with dealers who are there to try to resolve these issues, but. But I wish we could, you know, try to find, or we can talk to Mr. Jackson, uh, any senator, legislature, governor, whoever it is, I don't care what party they are, if they can help Bastrop, please, cut that.
Well, you're definitely right, I was thinking the same thing, everybody does, so much, so much of it, you know, grants are good, but that's a good, we have to deal with what we have. I think, if we look at this budget, we should set aside, and we have, and we got a lot of poking of anybody, we should set aside two hundred fifty million dollars, I mean, strictly two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Excuse me, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and you get that to, to go in and move those abandoned houses that we can't move by law, to go in and clean them up. Uh, two hundred, I say two hundred fifty thousand, because that would put fifty thousand in each district, and we could get that kind of budget and get that kind of work going in. It won't take long, thirty, four years, Bastrop like a whole different place, but we gotta take action. I know grants are good, grants are, and I'm near grants, I think they're, they're writing, writing it easy, they say we going to get it, but if we have, if we have the money ourselves, and like I said, generate revenue. And then put back into our community, put fifty thousand dollars a year, I mean, jet, I mean, fifty thousand dollars in each district a year, of that, we'll see the difference. In, in two or three years, a hundred thousand dollars or so help clean this up, help clean district, you know, it'll take time, and we, we can't do it all at once, but we can put fifty thousand dollars into. Each district for the next four years, you will see the difference, our city being cleaned up, and like I say, in use our, our law, we have, we have an organization that loosens, that we have the right to move. Right, council, on a new, now, we, we, I think we're going through a lot of obstacles, we don't have to go through, so, it come a nuisance, it come a health hazard, all we have to bring before the council. And the council, say, yeah, this is the health hazard, and we, we all standing together on it, and, and, and move it, and it's a nuisance in the community, and we have a lot of nuisance property. That we'll never get from the families and the members, so like Mr. Green said, they done moved out of town, they done packed up, they done moved, grandma left it to them, and it's a fell down. And they in California living and rolling here, and we're, and we, we're here in Bastrop, uh, fighting mosquitoes, rats, and roaches, and, and on, on grandma property. I think, I, I just think that, that's what you, we, and, and we, we, but when we get to know, because then I need two hundred people, that's what we can do, let's put some, let's, oh, that's too small, that's not, we don't go with the grants. And they, you know, they give to you, you got a lot of stipulations, let's take the money we got, our cash flow money, so we gonna clean out the area.
Okay, uh, Councilman Green, uh, Councilman Grant, brilliant idea, put money in.
I worked in gold, and we, and you can all attest, that when you dealing with government entities, whether it's local, federal, what it's gonna cost the city. It may cost a private person, that's when we try to strategize and get the private landlord to do it, because they gonna rob the city. Where it costs, it may cost you three hundred, I mean, just say three thousand, but when they working with the city, you probably be out forty thousand. You know why, you gotta do environmental test, you gotta do an air control test, you gotta test for asbestos, and lord behold, if asbestos is anywhere around, that's gonna cost you about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, a hundred and twenty thousand for, uh, 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 eight thousand dollar property, and, and I would just go after the fire chief. Is there, is there, they burn outside the city limits, am I correct? Can they burn, you know, stuff outside the city? I'm just asking question.
Okay, go ahead, and she making a note of it.
Okay, so I just wanna know, we don't have controlled burns in the city, no more do. No, I ain't talking about, no, I'm, I'm just asking a question. Okay, period, okay. Well, I got a question, just, 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 Mr. Locke said something, he said EPA, what's the difference between his invisible line, parish and the city? Is EPA for? Is EPA for, you can burn outside, stay burned inside, that's the city ordinance, eh?
Usually, uh, there's a, a ban issue from a high level on, on burning. And that comes down from a different level, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're built by D.
Uh, uh, don't talk from your city.
Okay, okay, okay. I guess what I was getting at, not burning the house down, you know, you're not gonna burn it down. I'm saying if people, I was just asking question, would they burn outside, now, don't miss it, it's proved, they're not gonna do it. I would just go up and flame them back. I would just say if they push it down, I would just ask, if it could, control burn like they burn, you said no, so, I understand. I wasn't talking about go flame them all up in Bastrop, I was just saying if, if they, if their family pushed the house down and they put it in the pile, we cannot burn, that's what I'm saying. Okay, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at there.
Okay, did you get your question answered, or you wanna put on the note?
Just on.
Okay, uh, since this is a public hearing, uh, Ms. Hendricks. Since this is a public hearing on the budget. And, and after which, we will, I wanna introduce somebody that we are gonna adjourn the meeting. Go ahead, state your name, please.
Well, I'm at Cindy Hendricks, nineteen year old daughter, East Madison, Bastrop, Louisiana.
Okay.
Um, I have just a couple of notes that I wrote down, and y'all don't have to respond, but I'm just gonna comment on a few things. And then I've got one question I wanted to ask, um, is it okay if I call him David? I wanna ask you something.
Oh, it's Mr. Jones, I can.
Mr. Jones, okay, wait, okay. Um, one of the things that, uh, which all are just now discussing is the blight. And I think Mrs. Beatty has some things on that too. And, uh, I'm concerned with just mowing, you know, you have places that just need to be mowed. But I do wanna ask, Mr. Jones, did I not understand when we had the historic commission meeting, that, uh, to, um, someone must be sent out to the person who pays the taxes? That they need to do something, and if they don't do it within so many days, then they can get fined, is that correct? Or, or something put on their taxes, we can mow it, and then, and then it's put on their taxes, is that correct?
That is correct, so that, that is the lien process that you can use. It's, it's what we would consider, if you ever hear me talk, it's a non-consensual method of enforcing. And basically what you do in, in grass liens or other, there's five categories, but all generally the same, with different filages or days. But you would send them notice of the violation, they would have X amount of days to do it. After not being done for those X amount of days, if it still existed, then the city can come in and do that. And then you send them a copy of the proposed bill, give them X amount of time to pay it. And then, at the end of that, if it's unpaid, you place the lien down at the taxes officer's office. The notices go out to the, depending on what kind it is, generally speaking, they go out to the owner per the registered roles of the taxes officer.
Okay, so, I'm gonna ask any question. So, once that you do that, is it just one time, or do you have to go back and mow it again? Can you still add to that?
You can do it repetitively. The thing that you get into is grass liens, not so much, because the cost unless, I mean, if you mow it every week or two weeks, you might get into a thing where the cost, when it gets onto the tax bill, when they go into the next year and those taxes are unpaid, that is included in the bill. So if they send a tax bill out to a piece of property that only has forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty dollar taxes, and then the tax bill's twelve hundred dollars, then it'll go to a tax sale if it's unpaid by the, anybody who's an owner or has an interest in it, or just anybody who wants to pay the taxes. So let's say lapses, the taxes aren't paid, it goes to a tax sale. The higher that bill gets, the less likely it's going to be purchased in the tax sale, because the taxes are so much more extreme than what it previously was.
My suggestion, why not hire instead of paying city employees, a mowing company? That would probably charge you a lot less by the hour, 'cause I know what they charge me just to mow my yard, you know, just to have somebody. And get them to mow the yards, and you can still charge it to their taxes, or their, whatever, the taxes on a lien. Now, um, most of the time, the people that are mowing, they should have some type of insurance on their own, is that correct?
It is.
So they, so you wanna be doing that, and that's less on y'all that's paying people, for people so much in an hour. That'd be their job. You just hire them out, you make a lien contract somebody out, that won't be as expensive. And like I said, you don't have to pay their insurance because they're doing their own. Um, that's one thing. The other thing, if they see a bill coming in, or fine coming in every so often, then maybe they would do something, call somebody, say, look, I don't want this, and we want this property. That's what I was thinking about, the, the building that we constantly have to look at, at Eastside. Had they been fined every single, say, if you don't have this down by so long, you're gonna get a fine. If you don't have this by so long, and you just keep on, somebody is gonna do something. They're gonna have to, because there's consequences, okay? So that's a suggestion. Um, the other thing was, um, I know that, um, um, Mr. Green brought up on the, um, recreation. Y'all know we have D and H boards, so we are part of their recreation. The past few years, I've seen budgets, but we have a track team, and I'll ask you, Mayor, do you know how many people are on that track team? That y'all send up every summer? About how many people?
We, we'll get that information for you, Ms. Hendricks, if you will call, um, or I can have someone to call you.
Okay, the reason, the last time I checked, I think it was twelve.
Okay, I believe it.
And so I don't know how many it is now, but when you look at the budget that you're doing for a track team, I would like to know why it is so high, like right now, you have like sixteen thousand or fifteen, um, I've got two different budgets that's got this listed. I saw fifteen, and on this one, I think it's sixteen or something like that. But anyway, if you add up what you spend in baseball, softball, and I don't think you have anything in basketball, but baseball, softball and football, you have probably, what, two hundred kids? That's involved in all of those sports? And they only have, they have the same budget as the ones that are only twelve now. And I just don't understand how that works. Also, I didn't know how y'all are looking at this, but I wanted to know, what was the revenue? Do you, don't y'all still charge, uh, the city league, like when they come in, they register? They do get, they do have to pay a fee, right? Is, is, is that correct? So I just kinda wanna know what y'all are taking in, and then what actually is taking place at the ball fields? Because I know it's, it's been kind of a little deal of us trying to keep Carter Park. And Carter Park's one of the, the best ball fields we've had. And I don't know how many people come up to me, and that's where they grew up, and that's where they played football, that's where they played baseball. And it always seems to come to a point at the beginning of the year that it's not taken care of. Um, I guess that was Main, oh, Main Street. Um, I know that you have a budget for Main Street, and, um, I haven't really, I don't even know who's on Main Street, and I don't think anybody else does, now that Mr. Yalonde is not there.
Uh, please, please.
Well, I just need to, well, I was gonna say, okay, you've got a budget for it, but I'd like to know what that person is supposed to be doing. I don't, I mean, I'm just asking because you are budgeted. And, um, I am with Mr. Green on, we do need to look at grants, um, to take in care of business. So, I'll, so I'll let me talk to you about that too.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Uh, one thing in particular, some of those teams, the groups raise money and, and what you maybe looking at, we can offer some clarity on donors as bosses, and, and maybe in and out money is a flow through, through the city budget. But we'll get that information, go ahead, and, and, and your name.
My name is Vicky Carpenter.
You need to, like, Lou would say.
How's it, better?
You okay?
Good.
Am I good?
Yeah.
My name is Vicky Carpenter, I'm a volunteer with Key Morehouse Beautiful. One of our projects is Fight the Black, and it's a passion with me, I dearly love seeing things cleaned up. Okay, about, I'm just gonna address one piece of property, because I think one step at a time, little by little, we can accomplish a lot, rather than trying to clean up them, many blighted properties that we have. About four years ago, property at one twenty-three North Washington collapsed. Thank goodness there was no one hurt yet. I wanted to know how much is in your budget for that demolition cost? The building has been condemned, the city can go in and clean it up. I understand there is asbestos, and the study's been done, but I also understand it's just for the flooring, which could be much worse. Flooring is not good, which there was no asbestos, but there is. But bottom line is, how much do y'all have budgeted in your demolition for that building?
Okay, I think we've heard from everybody.
I've got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Several years ago, I think it was under Mayor Hawkins, there was a litter crew, it was a red van, and a man named Hercules headed it up. They did an awesome, fantastic job. Right now, our litter is light on the main carters, but don't get off the main carters. It's disgusting, to use my granddaughter's word, disgusting. I think if you would have something budgeted for a litter crew similar to what Hercules did, I think they could work it little by little, just like the black. So I would like to see that in the budget, if possible, and I think the entire community would praise y'all for doing that. As you know, and as I told you, I'm with Key Morehouse Beautiful. Our group, our last group meeting in May was nineteen people there. Did you hear me, nineteen? And you know what they complained about? Litter, light, a little bit of everything. And they're not, it's not a, a, a quiet session, they're constructive criticisms with dates. They know what they're talking about, they're not at it. And, uh, what would be the, is that in your budget, a litter control crew similar to what Mayor Hawkins had under Hercules? I think the Sheriff's Department, we've discussed this before, would help us with inmates. And I think we might come across some type, um, vehicle that was seized from drug, or something like that. So it, I think if we could work with Sheriff Tubs, we might come up with a, a litter control crew that could be a little at a time. Is it in your budget? That's my question. Would that be in your budget, a litter control crew? Okay, that's it. Thank, oh, one more thing. I wanna support what Cindy said. You may wanna think about, rather than letting the city crews do the mowing all the time, or whatever it may be. You know, I worked in International Paper thirty-five years, and during that period of time, they stopped letting their employees do a lot of the work, they contracted it out, for the simple reason, it was cost efficient. They didn't have to pay benefits, and the, the professional crews sometimes get a much better job at a lesser cost. And International Paper's a corporation, they knew what they were doing, and they kept doing it year after year, what is it tell you? Thank you.
Mr. Grant, thank you. Mr. Grant.
When, when in the budget, I should, I, I, I thought we were going to fifteen thousand dollars for Key Morehouse Beautiful.
No, in fact, that's something you may wanna consider, contract in and out, that's another, may have to be, one more thing. Under Fight the Black, we've been working since two thousand and ten, partnering with, the first building we brought down belonged to E.W. Smith in his estate on the corner of Harrington, not Harrington, excuse me, West Madison and Martin Luther King. That was the first one, and what we do is we go in and partner with the property owner. They pay half, and we pay half the demolition. They sign a contract, it's legal, it's witnessed, and it's, after the building is down, the structure is down, and a certain, you know, weather permitting and all that, we give them half the demolition cost. So if y'all would make a donation to us dedicated to demolition, we could continue, we just were awarded five thousand dollars from Drax, and I'm working on Maribor, I've approached four property owners on Maribor, because it's awful, it's shameful what the students and our visitors look like, look at going up. That's Angela's, I think. At any rate, the burned building, I mean, that should be a piece of cake. I addressed the property owner about it, told her we would pay a half of the cost of it, she said she didn't have the money. And I, I respect that, but I also respect everybody else that make, you know, travels around, our, our citizens, our students. But anyway, then I tried to get the lady, the man that owns the property on the corner, that yellow pretty piece of property on the corner of Maribor and West Madison, he didn't wanna do it either. We're paying half their demolition cost, and they still don't wanna do it. All right, then I tried to get a hold, I had a minute to get a hold of a lady that owns the house on the corner across from the fire department. The windows have already been taken out, but I'm gonna continue to try to get a hold of her. And the fourth one belongs to a property owner that is impossible to deal with, so I'm looking for another one on North Maribor, 'cause I care. We care, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, okay, I think we've heard from everybody. Um, the points have been taken down, they're gonna test them against, uh, was it legal? What falls within the guideline, and get you some answers. Turn it on, we're gonna list those questions to you. And from a, uh, administration standpoint, we'll address the areas of interest, and also we need your legal input. Before I adjourn this meeting, I wanna acknowledge Mr. Nat, and wanna acknowledge you and Pelican State, if you will stand, please, and I digress, digress back to, um, to our announcements. I know the Pelican State is one organization, um, twenty-two years under the Councilman Bradford. And that is a, a, um, team effort that the city has supported for the last twenty-two years, is that correct, Mr.?
That's correct, that is correct.
And would you give the thanks, uh?
Is it a budget, is it a lasting budget?
We, we don't support it, money, we support it in, in, uh, in.
Yes, yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, I'm Kenny Mann, I'm the president of the Pelican State Youth Group. Uh, this is the twenty-second year, as Mayor mentioned, that we've, um, been active in the community. And I was coaching in the NBA in two thousand and two. And I decided to start the Pelican State Program here for the purpose of creating opportunities for our Morehouse Parish citizens, uh, who may be striving to achieve at the level that the Lord has blessed me, my brother and our family to achieve at. Basketball has been great to us. Basketball was introduced to us by Miss Inez Grant, Leon Barmore, some of the names you may remember. Uh, and we were fortunate enough to succeed in basketball. But that could not have happened if it wasn't for individuals like Miss Grant, those Piggies, different people that I remember, our, our, um, teachers at Bachelor Pod, at Morehouse Junior High, where I attended, at the elementary school where I attended. They created opportunities, we're trying to step up now and be the Miss Grant. Be the first grade elementary school teacher, be the junior middle school teacher, be the high school, be the advocates to, for our young boys and girls, because as many of you have mentioned today, I've heard you sitting here. This has been a great learning experience for me, this is my first council meeting, by the way. This is my first council meeting, and it was very enlightening. And from the standpoint of, and to hear some of you and the passion that you have for the community, that's why I'm here. I arrived back here three years ago. Lord has blessed me out of, off of Forest Avenue, Erie Street, and Forest. I arrived back here three years ago, the Lord has blessed me out of, off of Forest Avenue, Huey Street, and Forest Park. To travel the world, basically, travel the world through basketball. Pelican State Youth Movement was brought, we, we decided to have Pelican State Youth Movement because we felt that. Many young boys and girls don't get introduced to enough, there's a lot that can be learned through sport, number one. There's a lot of criticism about sports, but I can tell you, with the plight of our kids today, and the things that are happening. Sports is one of the things that they love, so why not we embrace that, and maybe, maybe try, use it to try and make a difference in their lives? We're not just teaching sports, we're teaching life skills. This is a big part of what we're doing, and if I'm a little passionate about it tonight, that's because I've been up since five o'clock this morning, trying to get ready for our session. And I just left our session at, at, uh, five o'clock today, and I, I'm still having my top on, Jane. So, we, we're, we're working to try and create opportunities like many of you have talked about. My big brother, I went over there, my big brother went to school with my big brother. And we, I saw you with my sister, I mean, so, we are trying to make a difference in the community, and we appreciate. Working with the mayor and everyone, that, all of you, that you can help us out in any way, uh, yes, we have, we have a lot of. In-kind services that we have, Patrick has been out there every day, every day we have the camp, I go over and they are there. If I don't want to have a camp, and something happen to a kid, and we don't have someone there to help and take care of it. They've been supportive of us every year, and that's the kind of services that we need, it's not about money all the time, it's about just helping, coming out there. We have volunteers, every year we have different volunteers that are, new volunteers that are coming out. So, what we wanted to do was use the traditional sports for our African-American kids and all of our kids. Because it's not just an African-American program, it's about Morehouse Parish program. It's for the parish, all the students. And we want to introduce non-traditional sports, for example, we bring them in as basketball and football, because we know that's what they love. But many of them get to enjoy baseball, and get to enjoy golf, something that I never had a chance to, it was never introduced to me. So, we wanted to make sure that these kids are getting an opportunity to get exposed to sports that. We, that we think that they can maybe get a scholarship to college, which was what happened with my brother and myself. And, and we think that if they get introduced to other sport, it keeps them off the street, it gets them active. It gives us an opportunity to touch them and impact their lives in so many ways. I was walking through the, excuse me, I was walking through the store just yesterday, getting ready for camp. And I had kids running up to me, Coach Matt, Coach Matt, do they remember me? Those are the type of things that I know that I'm touching lives, when, when they can remember me, they haven't seen me on a regular basis. But it takes the help of the community and everyone here that, uh, can come out and be involved. We appreciate all the love and support that Mayor, you, you and your, uh, group have provided for us, that they are active out there with us. Uh, every, every day of this camp, and in the past, so, we're, we're happy to work with the city as well as the, the school board. To really provide these programs and these services, and I agree, I appreciate this opportunity, it's been a long day, and, um. But I, I just want to say one last thing is, we need, yes, we need financial support. The Boys and Girls Club is here in town, I'm on, I'm on the committee for the Boys and Girls Club. The Pelican State Youth Movement is another entity separate from the Boys and Girls Club, because the Boys and Girls Club, we only work with first grade through fifth graders. And the numbers starting out, this is the first year, the number starting out with the Boys and Girls Club is only twenty-five players, twenty-five students. That was the plight, twenty-five students, let's start out small, and grow. Next year, we maybe add sixth grade or seventh grade, things of that sort, that's what was proposed to us from the Boys and Girls Club. But my plight is, here's where Pelican State come in, we don't have an age limit, we don't have a grade limit, we want to work year around, not just in the summer. We want to work year round with the Boys and Girls Club, with the Robinson William Community Center, everyone else who's here. We're not about taking credit for anything, it takes a team effort, it takes everybody, I can't make the difference, and all the kids live, myself, at the Pelican State Youth Program. So, we're working together, I love what I heard earlier. We have a problem, the only way to make it happen, you have to talk about it, sit down, and that's where that coaching come in, and me. I evolved from a player into coaching, and you're only as good as the people that you have working together for one cause, and, and they're working for you. I want to say one thing, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say. When I heard, and Mayor, I don't know if you're aware of this, but for the city park and recreation program to be closed on a weekend, on a Saturday. That's unheard of, I've traveled the country, I've traveled the world, I've been to Africa, I've been to Greece, I've been to Spain, Italy, everywhere. Kids in the community, that's when they're not in school, they go to school during the week. And when they're in school during the week, they don't really go to the park and recreation, the gym out there, because they have to scud it, they have to play in sports, whatever. They're off on weekends, and the gym and the park is not open. I would like to say, please, please, do whatever you have to do to make the parks, the recreation open on weekends for kids. And that's giving us extra opportunity to work with them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, um, it's been a pleasure to serve with you on the Boys and Girls Club. And also want to thank you that your family has come back and reinvested into the community with Airbnb. And your work for twenty-two years with the Pelican State, and, um. I noticed I didn't get my T-shirt, maybe you're waiting on my donation this year, but, uh.
We need you to show up.
Okay, what, what's the, I've been, I've been so busy, I've been to ribbon cutting, what, give the dates, please, and.
Today was our first day, just opened today, we'll be there tomorrow, and the last day is Saturday.
Okay.
It's three days, and we will end at Saturday, and we end with a party picnic in the park. We have slide, water slides, things of that sort, by the way, I love what you guys said about the pool, that's where I learned to swim, and my family learned to swim. Please get the pools open again, but yes, Saturday is the last day.
Okay.
And you used to come out, and you'd come out, and you've talked to the kids before, we'd love to have you out again.
Absolutely, what time, I posted it on our, I had posted.
We start at, we start at eight o'clock in the morning, eight to three.
Eight to three.
And we say three, but if they're playing and we're having fun, we go to four or five like today.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Save my T-shirt.
I've got you already.
Extra large. Thank you, thank you for your com, uh, comments, at this time, I'm. I'm going to call for adjournment of this meeting, we have the, the notes, we'll get them typed up, Turner Jones. We will get, when we answer the part, the administrative part, then we're gonna need you to weigh in on the legal part, all right? Okay, I'm adjourned this meeting.
I'll make.
I'll make a motion.
Seven.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.